This is a meeting of the Southwood Public Library Board of Trustees. It is September 13th at 7:03 PM if somebody wants to call us to order.
Call the order. Tracy.
Second, Maria.
And then we'll just go around. So Lynn Blair.
Maria Gallo.
Tracy Mizwar.
Tammy Flag.
Jen Belton. And I know your names, but you might have to spell the last names.
I can look in the sheets for them.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yep. Okay, so in order, we have no public comments. As far as communications, very brief. I sent, we were having trouble with kids waiting for rides after school here last year, sometimes waiting upwards of 30 minutes or so for their rides. I did send a memo to the schools, just a reminder of our policy, asking if they could share. I posted on Facebook and I sent an email out to our email list and we haven't had any issues yet, so hopefully.
The purpose.
Yeah, hopefully it's a simple purpose. And then they're doing the trunk or treat again this year. I like to see the library represented, but we may not have enough staff to actually go. I think it's the 29th. I could be wrong. I could be wrong. I don't have the date in front of me. That's November.
Yeah, but I'm thinking this is the 31st.
Yeah.
Sunday is the 20th. 29th.
Yeah.
And where do they do it?
They're doing it at Wally Park this year.
Okay.
Hello. I'll dress my kids up as, I don't know, what characters.
Okay, so Tammy and Jen are on board.
And I possibly, I just don't know, because my grandbaby's birthday is first birthday.
Yeah.
And I don't know when we're leaving.
Yeah, so I will, I'll send the details to you two and then, but if anybody, you know, if you want to donate candy or something.
Yeah, definitely do that.
Like, I don't know how many they recommended, but we will get candy. So if you want to donate candy, that's always good, too. Okay, so yeah, I'll send the details.
I said we'd go.
Yeah.
I will go, but I don't want to decorate a car.
No, that's fine. I usually just do mine or something, or we were, we were unicorn last year. I don't think we wanted to be unicorn two years in a row. So I'll come. You can buy pre-made kits. It's not a big deal. That's fine. Yep. Okay, so I will send you guys the details and then we'll go from there. Okay, um, August minutes. I have copies for everyone.
I read through them, but I didn't make copies.
Um, and I think the only, the only edit I saw, Tammy, was under the new business. Or on page two, under item four. I didn't reach out to the state troopers. I think that's something that the police need to do. So in that edit, I can just, I have, I copied it all into a Word document, Tammy, so I can just make the edits and then we'll. So yeah, I didn't reach out to them because I think that's something that, you know, that our police need to do. And I wouldn't even know where to begin. Oh, and under new business number three, I'll just change that to assistant director description.
You're pretty well doing it on my.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to accept the August minutes as amended.
And then we have our August.
Hi.
Hi. I.
You mean.
We're on a mission tonight. The general minutes.
Chrissy.
And then just the breakdown of the Friday time of the evening statistics. So August was a really, August was a really great month. 5,663 circulations, which is.
Wow.
More than we've had in any time in 2020, 2021, and so far this year. So that was a, yeah, August was a really, really good month.
Any thoughts on why?
Generally, summer, we're always generally a little bit busier in the summer, too. And, and we had our big end of the year summer reading program that got quite a lot of people.
Do you think with the summer reading, you are going to continue to keep it online?
Probably. I mean, it seems to work really well. There is, there is always the option of if somebody doesn't want to do it, you know, the children's librarians are willing to figure out something, you know, or somebody who doesn't either have access to or doesn't want to do it online. But I think it seems, I don't know how, if your kids did it and whether they liked it like that or.
So my kids do very well with the paper. Because they can be in control of it.
Yeah.
And so like I can stick it next to their bed and be like, okay, did you finish a book? Great. Check it off, like write it down, right? Whereas to go onto the computer is a step that like, especially at nighttime, I'm not willing to let them do. So for my family, it doesn't work.
Okay.
But I'm not saying that it doesn't work for lots of families. I just, I wondered if it would be back, because I know that for my family, it was a really tough. Like, we didn't do summer reading. They read all summer. We came to the library. You saw us.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I, I haven't, I feel like my, my couple of years having been back here got like sidelined by COVID and things. So since we've done, since we've done it online, I, I don't have the numbers to, I mean, I could look back and see the numbers, you know, in my head to compare to what we did at, when it was on paper. But, yeah, so I may, we may, maybe there's a way we can just put out a survey or just a general question, just to kind of see what people like and, and go from there. Because I think there's.
Just be hybrids, like.
Yeah, I think there's some people.
Can it be on the survey and after work?
It could.
Yeah.
It could.
Thinking, you were just.
Tammy's on a roll today.
This game.
Is there any other questions about our statistics for August?
With the circulation, because you did the, the surprise book boxes, right?
Yeah, we do the book boxes every other month.
But they were in August.
Yeah.
So where's, what kind of chunk was that?
I think, I know for the adults, I usually do between four to five, so four to five at two books a pop. And then I think the kids, our teen librarian usually does like two to three, and I think the kids get four to five as well. So it's not like a huge, huge chunk. I mean, it's a good chunk, but it's not like a substantial chunk. So I think our high numbers is just, you know, the general, well, end of summer reading, everybody's panicking getting their last minute summer reading books before the school assignments are due.
I mean, just look at how many people go through the doors, you know what I mean? The numbers are up even that way.
Yeah, absolutely. And, and the, the children's and teens librarians did some really great programs this summer that were really well attended.
Awesome.
The Wingmasters, yeah, that one is, that one is always.
Oh, that one's so good.
And that was in August and that got lots of people through the door. Okay, so if there's no other comments, I will move on to old business. So this is, this is the last time you'll hear about the LSTA grants. It ends in October, October 1st. We held our last program September 6th, so that grant is totally finished. So all I just need to do is just to write up a final report for them. But overall, I think it went really well. I mean, the numbers you get for those type of programs, I mean, you're never going to get for like a business or career related program. You're never going to get like the 40, 50 people you get for the ghost programs. And that's fine, because the smaller groups, there's more interaction and things like that. So I think the people who attended our programs really liked them. We have to send out a survey after every program and everybody had something pretty positive to say, so I think it went really well. So we'll probably.
Discrimination one, was that the same person who did the other?
Yeah, Ed. Ed, yeah. Yeah, yeah, he was really great. He actually, because I was looking for somebody to do a topic on that and I couldn't find anybody. And I asked him and he created a whole presentation for us, so he's really good.
I, I was gonna watch it and then present it.
Yeah, he's, he is excellent. I can send you his information, or I think he has a website.
Yeah, I think I. When we came to.
So that's wrapping up. Our strategic plan committee is meeting next Tuesday, the 20th. And we will start working on the preliminary details for our strategic plan. So, long story short, we're going to meet in September, October. I'm kind of wavering between. October, I was planning on doing a survey to get some data for our strategic plan. When I was reading through our last strategic plan, we had used data from the annual surveys. It doesn't look like they did a whole new survey just for the plan. So I'm kind of debating on like using our data from the April 2022 annual survey. As opposed to doing, I don't know, with like the master plan survey, if people are just surveyed out, I don't want to like.
If you do another survey, what are you going to ask differently?
Yeah, that's, that's the thing.
Pretty much covered everything in April.
I feel like we did. I feel like we did.
You should be able to use that.
I think, yeah, I'm kind of going back and forth. I'm looking at different questions we can ask and different samples from other libraries. But I feel like people are, with like the master plan they're doing and that survey, I don't know how, how surveyed out people are. They're just so tired of it.
Instead of asking, like, you know, a lot of questions, I wonder if you would have something like just a little blurb about our planning for next year, blah, blah, blah. Do you have any ideas, concerns, suggestions, and suggestions open?
I was thinking, yeah, something along those lines. So like more of like, as opposed to like, oh, multiple choice, you know, almost like you're taking a test. Something more of just like maybe two or three, open-ended, you write what you want to write type things and, and going from there. If we do do something, I think it'll be like really condensed, because I, I think people are just done with seeing surveys for everything. So I'm going back and forth. I don't know if anybody has any strong yea or nay, but. And I'll also see what the committee thinks next week and, you know, I'll, I'll present what, what we got from our April survey. And, because we did get some good data, so it may just be beating a dead horse if we try to do it again.
Did you get all the people you wanted for the committee?
Yeah, yeah, so we, we did. We got, we got, I think, two of the trustees, two or three of the trustees. I think Tammy, you said, yes, and Cindy and Michael. And then we got somebody from the school, the friends, and then a bunch of patrons and, and then two staff members, too.
Okay.
So, yeah, I think we've got a good, a good group.
Good.
And then the next meeting is Tuesday, September.
Yeah, so it's Tuesday, September 20th, yep, that we're meeting. And then we'll either, we'll either do the survey in October. And then we'll probably meet again in November to either analyze the survey data or. That is where we stand. And then hopefully, so once we meet in November, I will use December, maybe January to kind of write the draft. And then we'll give it to the board. We'll let the committee look at it one more time if there's any edits or changes or anything. So that's where we stand right now with that. The outside sign, we did get a quote from the Westfield Sign Shop. And the friends have graciously agreed to cover the cost of refurbishing the sign, which is fantastic. So they will look at the lighting, redo the plexiglass covers, paint it, so it will look fresh and new.
Nice.
Which, which is much needed. And lastly, for old business, the mural, if you haven't been in there to check it out in the kids' room, definitely go take a look at it. She had a really nice, she grew up in Southwood, so it was a really nice connection to, to the library. And it came out pretty good. It's nice to see a, a nice bright mural in there.
I heard the friends were thinking about replacing the big house in the kids' room, too.
Yes.
That's kind of awesome.
Well, we, they, yes. So the plan is, but I know people are very attached to it. So our children's librarians are very creative and they're going to come up with something to like. I know how corny it sounds, but like say goodbye to the house. So like something that people, people are very attached to that house. People grew up with that house.
The house is amazing.
The house is amazing. Yeah, so they're, they're going to do something to kind of, you know, not really memorialize it. You know, yeah, retire the party for the house, something like that, because we don't want to just. Gone one day and have like sticker shock when people come in and they're like, go. Obviously, there'd be a new one there, but you know.
If you need someone to come and make the house disappear, my family would volunteer to do that.
That house is, it's, it's been here for many years and it's very popular, so it won't disappear overnight if the children's librarians or something. Something nice to kind of say goodbye.
That's hilarious.
And then, yeah, tomorrow at the friends' meeting, Molly, the children's librarian, picked out her favorite new house, so I'll show you that, show that to you guys.
I forgot the meetings.
Sorry.
All of a sudden, all the meetings are back. I'm not caught up yet.
Okay, and into new business, I checked in again. I, I'll just keep it on here as I check in month to month. There's been no update about any type of training or anything. I checked into the town again and there's, as, as far as the person I spoke to, there is no new updates or anything. So Michael was going to check in with somebody as well. I know we said at the last meeting. Yeah, so maybe, maybe next meeting he'll have some more information if he, if he was able to talk to that person. Next thing I have on here was the Weeded Books transportation. I know I asked last time about, you know, whether I would be able to be refunded for the travel fees for taking the Weeded Books to the bindery. I haven't gotten an update. I wanted to check in with the town to make sure that that's okay before we do that. I haven't gotten a response about that yet. So I'll just table it to the next meeting until I can get an answer. Minimum staffing policy review. So this is, what's going around is our minimum staffing policy. And so what I wanted to ask, when, when we wrote this, we, we said that if only two staff members are present, they must stay at the circulation desk. And then if there are fewer than two staff members, the library will not be able to be open to the public because, well, excuse me. So if, if there is only two staff members, the library can't be open with just two people for longer than two hours. So my thinking was, when I wrote this, and then after I looked back on it and I go, oh, what about Saturdays? So if we're open for three hours on Saturdays and we only have two staff members, do we want to change it to only two staff members for no longer than three hours? But three hours is a long time for just two people doing everything. But, or, I mean, if it were to come to that and we only had two people, we could only be open two hours.
You could just put in parentheses, except on Saturdays, it'll go for three hours.
Yeah.
You know.
But I feel like, I almost feel like two people for three hours is, is a lot, but I mean.
So we're going to make it separate rules for Saturday?
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, does anybody have any thoughts? I mean, we could just, we could just say, you know, excluding Saturdays, like Maria's suggestion. And that, you know, I mean.
I don't know everything you do all day long.
Yeah.
That it would be too much for two people, but on a Saturday, couldn't you leave certain things going until Monday?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. You know, the unpredictable factor is just foot traffic.
Yeah.
So I mean, you know, potentially, yeah, we could just put things aside and then save it for the week.
Yeah, I mean, if you usually check in all your books as they come in, well, you don't, can't do it on Saturday because you're too busy with other things.
Save it for.
Leave it to Monday.
Okay. Is that.
That would be my thought.
Is that fair for everybody? So we could just reword it, you know, for longer than a two-hour period excluding Saturdays.
Yeah.
I think that's, that's pretty clear.
Either that or are we be open for two hours?
That also does, I feel like that doesn't really make sense, too. By the time you open, it's time to close, so.
Yeah.
The library will not be operated by only two staff members for longer than a two-hour period on weekdays.
I mean, yeah, you think that's clear enough that people will kind of read into that and say, you know, Saturday is kind of a different.
Because the schedule changes too around during the, like summertime, there wasn't Saturday hours at all, right?
Yeah.
So just if it's weekdays and it's.
Yeah.
And then if you know that, like, there's going to be a time where you have a month where there's only going to ever be two people on Saturdays, you might say like, okay, you know what? This month we're not opening on Saturdays, because we know it's going to be crazy.
Yeah, I think a week, a longer than a two-hour period on weekdays. Yeah.
That being said, during the school year, we can only come on Saturdays, so could you please?
Oh, yes. No, I mean, this, this is only the absolute extreme circumstances when we would have. We haven't had to, I, I feel like I should knock on wood when I say this, we haven't had to close at all during COVID or anything because of shorts. I've worked extra time to make sure of that, you know, I've been, this is only for like the extreme circumstances where we would have to. Okay, so if somebody wants to. The amendment policy.
Should you refer the amended minimum staffing policy made by.
Second by Tracy. Oh, sugar.
Hi.
Library of Things lending policy. Okay, this is, this is really, this is, this is a matter of semantics, but. I'll just send a copy around. So this is, these, this is long-page documents. It's basically just the paperwork we have people fill out when they're taking our Library of Things items out. So there's a, there's a waiver just to make sure, you know, that people are, are responsible for themselves when they borrow any of the equipment. But I did notice, and I don't know if this is a matter of semantics, if I'm being too picky, however, this policy was written back when Diane only had tools in the policy. So it says tools, throughout the whole thing, it says tools borrowing rules and procedures. But now we have like yard games, we have ghost hunting kits, we have all kinds of other stuff, so it's no longer just tools. So I was just going to suggest going through here. I know it's, it's a really silly to do, but if we just replace tools with like equipment.
That works.
Everything.
Yeah.
I know, I, I feel so silly, but it's just like.
But no, what I'm laughing at is like, I'm imagining somebody being like, I'm going to go look for ghosts in my house, but I have to put on my eye protection first. And like, it doesn't.
I know, there's, there's some things in there that it's like, you know, but I don't, I don't want to have something different for like, and have our circulation staff have to go, okay, is this, is this a tool? Is this, you know, if we have one thing that covers all, you may need eye protection to look for ghosts. Better safe than sorry, I guess. So I mean, if, if everybody's okay with that change, I mean, I think it just makes more sense to, to have the equipment, because then, then it kind of covers the gamut of everything we offer.
And I would also, I agree with her, if you're going to do it and you're going to write. Oh, it says when tools are in use, but maybe when needed or something. With the eye protection, because it says will be worn at all times if you put in equipment. And that eye protection must be, maybe you should just write when required. Eye protection must be worn when required.
Yep.
Or something of that. You guys are the librarians, so I'm just.
Oh, represents and agrees that she is capable and experienced in using all equipment. And then all tools will be used for normal purpose and in a proper manner, using eye protection when appropriate.
And who decides that? Where an eye protection?
Well, I mean, I guess, I mean, I guess if you left it as is and that eye protection will be worn at all times when tools are in use. Then the tools are the tools. Are we getting too picky? I mean, I almost, I almost.
Is, is the eye protection included in the library thing?
It's a separate thing they can check out. It doesn't come with everything, but they can check out. We have two bags of safety glasses.
Sign your equipment saying that you will use eye protection when using the eye protection.
That's a question.
Yeah.
Yes.
You have to supply them with the eye protection, because they're not going to go out and get it. That's my, my only point.
You're going to borrow my children's goggles.
You can, but that's one.
So what's our final say on that? You know, just should we leave it out? Eye protection when tools are in use or when?
Yeah.
I propose, or no, I make a motion that the Library of Things paperwork reflects that it is a library of things. And that that may take some more editing slightly than just changing tools to equipment, but that it should not be like a horribly large endeavor.
Yeah, no.
Or you put in the tools, et cetera.
So, so then that eye protection will be worn at all times when, at all times when applicable equipment is in use.
When required for safety.
When, when, there we go, at all times when required for safety.
That's beautiful.
I'm an English teacher. I'm probably good at word spelling.
Okay. All right.
I very speak English language, so.
All right, I may. Perfect. I may just have to, I may just send this to, because I'm, I'm sure when they wrote this, it was written with the town council. So I may just have to send them a draft and say, these are the approved changes made by the, by the trustees. And if they have any issues, then I can bring it back next month. If you guys just want to vote on the amend, the amendments we made tonight.
I, Tracy, vote on the Library of Things amendment.
I second.
All right, and then the next thing, we're just going to have to table till next month. I was writing a policy for animals in the library. We don't have one and it's something that we need to address. But, um, since it's something that needs to be looked over by town council first, because we just need to make sure that it, you know, that's, that's compliant, then, yeah, the town council's reviewing it.
COUNSEL.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, the lawyers.
Lawyers, the lawyers, yes. The lawyers have to look over that one first, just to make sure that it, that it works. And then, so we'll just table that to next month. I wasn't sure if I was going to get it back in time for this meeting, but we're not, so. Good. And then the second to last thing.
Say one more thing.
Oh, yeah.
I'm sorry, but when you said we don't have one and it needs to be addressed, I really thought you were going to ask if you could get a puppy or a kitten and I was really excited. And then I realized it was paperwork and I was less excited.
Yes, yes. My, the last library I worked at, I was able to bring my dogs into and they, the kids love it. They love seeing Daisy at the library. When I did like a Valentine's Day thing and they, like, what do you like most about their library? So many of them wrote Daisy and it's just like, I saved those little hearts, because that, my dogs are my children and they are so special to me. And it was just, it warmed my heart, but I don't think my dogs would go over well here.
Why?
My kids would be sorry.
They are very bouncy and they're very, but this, this isn't about me. This is, this is about another.
Okay.
We should make it about you and we should bring Daisy to the library.
That would actually be a good library thing, actually, like.
Borrow a dog.
Borrow my dog?
No, maybe not your dog, but they have like, like in Westfield, they have the, the pets that are approved for comfort or whatever. And it, like, do a thing where, you know, like a Saturday or whatever, where you can meet the pets or.
Yeah, no, this, this policy, the way, the way we wrote it is that, you know, we, we acknowledge that, you know, we're going to have programs like Wingmasters with birds. And like we had Gilbert the pig here and like we, so the library will have programs with animals and that's okay. But, um, you know, we just, we had an instance with somebody bringing in a pet that wasn't library friendly. And so we needed to, we just need to have some. that wasn't library friendly. And so we needed to, we just need to have something documented that.
Was it a ferret?
No, it was, it was a dog, but it, it wasn't library friendly. So we just need to have something in place so that, you know, obviously, you know, any type of registered animal is completely fine.
On a leash.
Yeah.
It has to be controllable.
Yes, yes, but we just want to make sure that, you know, and I asked a lot, a lot of other libraries for copies of their policies, you know, and wording it, you know, that like service animals are fine.
Yeah.
But pets, pets, yeah, pets are, you know.
They should, yeah.
So. Yep.
Except Daisy, maybe.
Well, Daisy would love to visit, but Daisy would be bouncing off the walls with happiness. So, yeah, the, the last library I worked at was very small, very, very small town, so like everybody brought their dogs in, which was very nice, but I understand that, you know, not everybody likes dogs. And so at least there, I could kind of keep them away, but. So that's, that's where that stands. So we'll just, we'll table that for next month and then hopefully I'll have something back from the lawyer about whether or not our policy is good. And then I can have you guys take a look and vote on it. And then, um, so we finished our report for the state on all our statistics for our circulation, our program numbers, that's been submitted. And we met all of our requirements, which was fantastic. And then our assistant director is just working on the financial report right now, which is due in October.
When you say you met all requirements, is that for accreditation? What word are you using?
Yeah, so we met all the requirements, um, for state aid. So as far as like our, our material spending requirement and all of that, yep. Um, so our assistant director is working on the financial report, which basically covers, you know, our budget for the year, and then we report that to the state as well in October. And yeah, and that's, that is the last thing I have, other than just a note that our next meeting is October 11th, which is, right, it's the second, the second Tuesday at seven, and, but then, um, looking ahead, we may just, the second Tuesday, November's election day. So I don't know if we just want to wait till Mike's back next time to see when, what he wants to do about moving it, because we have some time.
Yeah.
All right, I'll bring the candy down. Or, you know how much I'll need, or?
Um, I mean, if you, if you're able to do, how much did you, you did a lot last year.
You don't tell me to buy candy. I'm going to buy candy. This is what I do. Take that and double it.
Last, last year was plenty. Last year, we had, actually, we had a lot. We had a little bit left over, so.
Okay. All right.
A moderate amount is perfectly fine, because we usually get other donations from people, too.
Okay.
And then that was the last thing from me. Unless there's something else, if somebody wants to.
Watch it to a jar.
My second.
Favor, I.
I. Tammy says aye.